Hi Bill.
Hello.
We're just starting. Means called to order 702. Members present, all of them, all of us are here, here from the public. Do we have anything from the public?
Yeah.
Okay, for selectmen's briefing, a couple of things. The school is starting their superintendent search. They've got questions that they pulled together for interviews, et cetera. They asked for some additional input and what they're looking for is someone on our board and on the Board of Finance to participate in the first round of interviews. Each interview is going to be about an hour. And the, and then to meet with the search committee afterwards. And, and they have five candidates. I would like to be the person who participates in that, having done it before. And having a little more sense at this point in time on what we need to see coming from the school, having been dealing with it. And some of the questions that I asked that they include have to do with what the superintendent, what types of information the superintendent proposed, the potential superintendent would provide to the Board of Education concerning finances and the maintenance of the property, properties there. And, and some other things as well, which they didn't have on there. So I would like to find out if either of the other two selectmen have an objection to that.
No objection.
Thank you, sir.
Catherine.
Yeah.
In their advertising, are they advertising for a full-time superintendent or how have they worded that?
I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that yet. So.
Could perhaps if you could ask, ask for that, that advertisement and give Roger and I a copy of it. I'd like to have a feel of what they have in mind.
You bet. I think that's good. Okay, on our re, well, we have reopening is down further in this. I'm trying to think there's nothing more of any major information that I have.
Catherine, I got a quick question for you. With regards to the home on North Road, where those, what was it, three or four families were displaced?
Yes.
What was the final outcome of that?
The final outcome of that was about, I think it's about seventeen thousand. I have, I'm putting together the information for the attorney to recoup that money. We have some more issues around that particular property. One is apparently the owner has put the furnishings that were in, that were left in there out on the lawn, and I guess it's an eyesore. I haven't had a chance to drive down there to look myself, but I do have somebody else looking. The, and I've had two of the neighbors call me or contact me to complain. So I have another set of complaints that have come in that are noise oriented complaints and it's on Howard Road. So, and that is, I've heard from three of the families there and I anticipate I'm going to hear from more. They've called the police. That hasn't been fruitful. Apparently the person knows when the police are coming, whether it's a scanner or whatever, and turns down the noise. So, you know, one thing I, and I'm sure it wouldn't be very, necessarily be very popular, is looking at the possibility of some kind of a noise ordinance, and I understand what's required with that. I'm looking at what the state says. It's not something that I'm looking to actively pursue. I want to understand it. The other one is a blight ordinance.
And I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of examples.
Can be defined better. Yeah, we have some interest very, we have a number of examples. And we certainly are pursuit, we kind of pursuing them one by one, using what we have at hand in terms of our ordinances and other rules, if you will, but we don't have anything that's really, you know, puts that all together. So, anyway.
You had froze on me when I, when I asked that last question. Is the house been reoccupied at all on North Road, Catherine?
No, it cannot be.
It cannot? Okay.
Let's put it this way, people cannot sleep in that house. You know, it's in some ways, it's out of our hands in terms of what the owner does at this point. I have heard there may still be dogs in there. I don't know. All we know is that we have completed, we have fulfilled our obligation to the people who were displaced. So.
And the total output from the town, you said was about seventeen thousand?
I think it's about seventeen. I just, I can't remember off the top. Somewhere between fourteen and seventeen.
Okay.
And I'm looking for a little bit more information from Melissa so I can be a little more precise when I send all that information off to the attorney. So that, yeah, there were some pieces that were missing. And she has, she's out of the office. She took a little vacation.
Okay.
And she was sick before that. Okay, and we definitely have other places that are just as bad. So the noise thing is, the noise thing's unfortunate because what's appears to be happening is the person who was making the noise and the neighbor approached, neighbors approached, is now harassing them by making more noise. So it's really a shame and it's hard to know, hard to know how to, how to get them to work together.
Can you comment on the source of the noise?
Oh, the source of the noise is the guy is apparently working on his motorcycle or whatever in his barn. And he turns up music and he turns up the bass all the way. And he's doing this on, you know, weekends, but he's also doing it on Monday nights, Tuesday nights, two, three in the morning. And the people are beside themselves. They, they get up at five thirty to get, go to work. You know, that's a tough one. So, little disappointing that, you know, I've been able to work with some other people to, on the noise, a noise kind of an issue. And this one's a lot tougher. So, the other ones were resolved to their satisfaction. Okay, so, and then, all right, can we move on to acceptance of the, I'm sorry, hear from boards, commissions, committees? Anything? Acceptance of minutes of regular meeting of April first?
I read them. I moved to accept.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All business, discuss reopening strategies. Okay, so the put and take was open on Saturday and Sunday. And Gary was down there. He's our, he's our third man down there for the four weekends, we believe. And not much action. So definitely I didn't expect there'd be much on Saturday because people were, the word doesn't get out the way that you might think it does, even on Ashford Community Connections Facebook page. It's just a little thing that somebody put out and maybe, I don't know, fourteen people commented. So they did put tables out there. One of the things that came up is someone asked if the tables were available to take. So. Anyway, and I actually did go today and respond and I said, no, they belong to Public Works. Let it go with that. And Sunday, there apparently wasn't much activity either. There were some. What's nice is Gary was organizing the stuff as it came in, which is good. And we'll see how it goes. My concern is, is if people aren't really bringing their stuff down there, then we're paying a third guy to be there for nothing. So.
I would hope that that third guy, and if he's being totally dedicated to that, is just a temporary thing.
That's our plan.
I mean, I can see it just to keep an eye on things. And if you've got, you know, the organization of it.
Yep.
Kind of redone, I can see somebody being down there, but I would hope, those things when they were originally instituted, were basically set up to run on their own. And I know COVID has led, you know, to some other measures we've got to take on it, but I would hope that that's only temporary. I will be part of the contributing factors down there, I'm told by my wife, this coming weekend, so we'll, we'll probably get a little more action down there.
I, I do want to say that I learned of, I'm trying to remember the name of the group. I learned of a group where, from John Rittenmeyer, where you can donate to a particular group and organization, and I'll get you the information. And what happens is they do sell the stuff, but it funds a very significant charity. Okay, one that supports people who are disabled working. So I'll share that with you as well.
There, there are a lot of terrific organizations around. One of my former staff members is a deacon of a church in the North End. And we donate all of our old clothes and any other clothes that we can come up with and different appliances and that. And they've actually got organizations that pay for shipping of anything down to Haiti and Jamaica and that. If they don't have a need for it in our own North End. I mean, it's just, as you look into this stuff, it's remarkable how many groups are out there helping people that are in most need.
Is that the Catholic Church in the North End?
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's a Baptist church down there.
Baptist, okay. Because I used to work with the Catholic Church. I had a friend who was Catholic and we used to do things out of Adna and ING.
Yeah.
Okay, so. In terms of reopening strategy, we also have yoga and Tai Chi that we're hoping to start in mid to late May. Right now, we're trying to work around the referendum because the, we have two, two referendums, but the second one is on the twenty fifth, I think it is, which is Tuesday.
May twenty fifth.
Yes, which means that Norton can't be available to any kind of a class during that time, nor should it be available to them the day before. And we're looking to try and avoid Tuesdays wherever we can anyway, just in case the referendum doesn't pass. Because then we'd have to have a subsequent recommend referendum on a Tuesday. So trying to work with these people who do the classes. I know for the Tai Chi class, that that one is one where it has to be six contiguous weeks. For the, even for the yoga class, it's the same thing, but the yoga class, she might be able to relocate if there was a Tuesday where they couldn't, couldn't use the building.
Catherine, I know at our last meeting you had brought up, and I guess there was a consensus of staff there at the town office building to shoot for the middle of July. Do you see any?
It's early July.
Do you see any flexibility in that? I mean, given the, I guess the governor's going to come out with the new recommendations or whatever, but are we leaving ourselves any play there that perhaps we can consider earlier or whatever, if things lighten up a little bit? Although right now I'm hearing Waterbury and, and there are several towns that are having some surges right now, which is concerning.
I think it's premature. We were also doing, looking at it based upon people having their COVID vaccinations.
Yeah.
And what, and, and having time after that. I will give you an update I got from Eastern Highlands today because I, we was called, I was called by something, about something else. I was called because they have a lot of appointments available at Yukon this week. And so asked to, you know, get the word out. And while I had him on the phone, I asked him some other questions about people getting vaccinated. And I think everybody should understand that just because you got vaccinated, doesn't mean you can't get COVID. What it does mean is in all likelihood, your symptoms will either, you will not have symptoms or the symptoms, symptoms will be mild. And I'm looking for my notes here. The other thing is that you can transmit it to someone else. There is a, they, they were saying the Moderna vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine, they're about ninety-five percent effective. And so that means about five out of a hundred people would, could have symptoms of COVID because they can catch it. And, and that there's about a fifty to twenty percent infection rate that we'd have with no symptoms. Was how it was described. And so I asked about the potential to transmit it to somebody else. And what I was told that that's a small, much smaller percentage, but it's very low, but you can. So I hope that at some point in time, there's more information that comes out to the public so that they understand this is what it really is. Because a lot of people are thinking, well, I'm vaccinated, hey, the two weeks are up, I can't get it at all. And that may not be the case. So certainly when it comes to the flexibility about opening up this place, I'd rather talk with the staff again about that. Because especially when we have a certain, what we think is a surge coming up. I think maybe it's a little premature to kind of lay out a sooner, a date sooner than what we already talked about.
I, I'm interested in the statistics and additional stuff that comes out through our own Public Health Department and of course the CDC, but I think we ought to stay as flexible as we can and.
Well, what does flexible mean?
Keeping ourselves well educated on what the potentials are.
So, so in terms of being flexible, what I would suggest, remember what I put out there were dates that were discussed with the staff. And if we find that the governor is changing, you know, rules, that kind of thing. I think there are some changes coming, happening. And we find that the transmission rates are, are going down, great. Then it makes more sense. But if in fact we're in a kind of a red state, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and that's why I think.
That's flexibility to me.
Doing that, I'm not saying we're not doing it. I think that, you know, we'll, we should continue carrying it on our agenda. We should continue to monitor things and, and stay as flexible as we can.
Yep, well, that's what we've been trying to do. We've been moving things around as best we can. So again, we've started with the yoga and Tai Chi over in the other building. And then we'll work on the rest of it. We're still looking at June for the senior center. Um, particularly because we're thinking about doing a kind of, not a grand reopening, but certainly a recognition of its anniversary. And there might be a few smaller type, small pod things that can be done with four people or so that are other activities that could conceivably happen before that. I also know that our senior center director will be on vacation at a certain point in time. So it doesn't make sense to open it up when she's going to be on vacation. And what else do we have? We also have found that on, someone has gone into the building without our knowledge. We discovered that some things were changed. So clearly some, you know, some other people have keys to that building and that's concerned to me.
Well, why don't we have the locks changed and we can keep our masters? But we could have those locks changed. It wouldn't be the first time we've done that.
Yep, okay, so I'll take a look at that. Thank you. All right, uh, so we have, next on the agenda is the executive session to discuss pending and potential litigation and protect the town's collective rights and interests related to the lots that comprised, that comprise and are known as the Cattle Rock properties in both the towns of Ashford and Wellington pursuant to CGS one dash twenty, two ten B four. I'd like.
Can I make a decision?
I was going to recommend that we move that to the bottom of the agenda.
We're on the same page. I'll move that.
Roger?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, the Trimco House project. So um, we have five thousand dollars that's been allocated to this fiscal year to look at the, do a, have a proposal, it's a phased proposal for, for the Trimco House. And, um, so I talked with, Joan Bowley has certainly contacted me, provided me with additional information. I talked with Bob Heard, the architect who worked on this before. And as part of that discussion, you know, said, hey, look, we've got the five thousand dollars. I'd like to know what can be put together for a phased approach along with prices for everything. And so he is drawing up a little proposal for us. And I would like to pursue that because the money's already been approved. And I would like to make sure that we get that, you know, going during this fiscal year.
You mean that five thousand dollars?
Yeah, the five thousand, twenty-five hundred was put up by the Historical Society, twenty-five hundred by the town.
Yeah.
And this was done, done and done the last voting.
I think you are authorized to do that.
Yep.
Or we can do it as a board, of course, without any special motions or anything.
Right, I'm, I believe I am authorized. I just wanted to bring it up and make sure that you're aware. And like I said.
One of the concerns I have about estimates at right, you know, at this time for, for certain phases or whatever, is that I know our, our statewide projects right now, particularly materials, lumber is doubled within the past thirty to forty-five days and probably is going to be getting worse. I'm sure Bob Heard has been around long enough to know and take that into consideration.
Yes.
These are only going to get worse where they get better.
Exactly. So I think the thing is I want to make sure we keep our word in terms of what we said we were going to spend the money on this year. So that's what's going on with that. New business boards, commissions, committee appointments. We have inland, wetland and water courses. Now we need to fill the alternate vacancy. Chris, do you happen to know if there's a timeframe on that, that we have to do that within?
On what?
Inland wetlands and water courses, filling the alternate vacancy?
No, there isn't.
Okay. All right, so we don't have anybody yet. Board of Assessment Appeals, fill the vacant Democrat seat to eleven nine, twenty twenty-one. And.
Vacant alternate seat.
Vacant what?
Alternate.
Oh, that's an alternate.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. And with that too, we don't have a timeframe constraint, right?
It's been open forever.
Yes. Rec Commission, fill two alternate member seats. This is also open.
Well, since Paul Varga is here, I won't nominate him to be the new chairman of the Recreation Committee.
Paul, I would love it if you were.
No, you really, really wouldn't, trust me.
Yes, I would, because they desperately need one. They need one who can run a meeting.
Yeah, you don't want me on that commission.
You're not going to tell me you don't believe in recreation. You're such a fun guy.
I won't tell you that.
Okay. Um, okay, tax refunds. I'm sorry?
Have one.
Okay.
VCFS auto leasing. Siting statute twelve dash one twenty-nine for a hundred and sixty-four dollars. Not ten.
So moved citing the statute.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, schedule special town meeting to be held on Monday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM via Zoom to fill an alternate member seat on the Board of Finance, whose term will go to November second, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
I just a reminder, that's going to be right before the public hearing.
Right.
On the budget.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Schedule special selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, to fix the date for the annual town meeting, which will be on Tuesday, May eleventh, adjourning to referendum for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget to Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. These have all been mapped out with the Board of Finance as well. Do we have a motion for that one?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, well, that was quick. Okay, going down to our executive session. I'm sorry, Paul, but you get to go someplace else. Oh, wait, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm gonna, you guys have to go on the executive side. He's gonna pull you anywhere, but I'll go because that's the end of it. So you have a good night. We'll see you next time.
Yep.
You too, Paul.
Same, that station. Same bad time. And what I'd like to do is have Christine and Linda come into that session with us. And then I need to, John, I need to let you know, how am I going to let you know when we're ready to come out of the session?
Okay, I'm sorry, Catherine. Yeah, I'm here. What do you need?
I want to find out how will I notify you when we're ready to come out of the session?
Um, just, just say my name, let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, a motion to go into the session?
So moved?
And invite Linda and Chris?
I'll, I'll second that. Out that we've invited Chris and our illustrious tax collector.
Yes, um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're there. So what we'd like to do is give you an update on Sat seven forty-seven.
Okay, you are out and recording again.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Read the motion that was recommended to us, the resolution regarding the Cattle Rock property.
Whereas the town of Ashford, excuse me, a second, is owed seven hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents by Cattle Rock Properties Joint Venture LP for properties identified as Ashford Assessors Maps, map number forty-three, lots three, six, seven, nine, ten, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen and twenty-seven. And is owed one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars and ninety-six cents by Cattle Properties of Connecticut for map number forty-three lot eight. Whereas on or about January fourth, two thousand twelve, the tax collectors in the towns of Ashford and Wellington initiated tax sale pursuant to section twelve dash one fifty-seven of Connecticut general statutes and proceeded to auction the properties. Whereas the tax sale auction date was adjourned by each of the tax collectors. Whereas the towns are working together and now seek to reinstate the tax sale for the sale of these properties. And each town now seeks to acquire the properties in each of the towns if there is not full redemption by the owners or full payment of all taxes due by a third party. Now, now therefore it is hereby resolved that the auction date for the tax sale now proceed and that the tax collector do all things necessary, including retaining an attorney to continue with the tax sale auction and notifying the delinquent taxpayer, each mortgagee, lien holders and other encumbrances, encumberance of record. And resolve that the Ashford Tax Collector is directed and authorized pursuant to section twelve dash one fifty-seven C of the general statutes to acquire and take title to these properties on behalf of and in the name of the town if there is no bidder or if no bid equals the amount of the full taxes due plus the cost of the tax sale to the town.
Do we have a sec? Do we have a motion to accept this or to move this?
I, I will make a motion reflecting the, the board's support and encouragement for the Ashford Tax Collector to pursue the sale of the property in accordance with the resolution that Chris just made.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion about it?
Can I ask, Linda, does, does that serve your purposes?
That makes me feel confident that when I go forward, you know, that it will be okay. you know, that it will be okay. Ten years later, let's go forward.
We're behind you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience as we work through this.
Good effort, Linda.
Yes, thank you.
Christine, everybody, everybody has worked on this collaboratively for a long time.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion.
Good night, folks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Christine, Linda? Good work.